I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
We're going to tackle the meeting minutes real quick and then we'll come back to you, Chief.
Sure.
Uh, we have minutes from September 20th, 2022. Did everyone get a chance to review those?
No objection.
Okay. Trustee Asher?
Um, yeah, I'm pretty much done.
No objections?
I don't have any objections.
Okay, I have one, and that is, um, incorporating the email that Mr. Pearl had requested us to add in as part of the record. Trustees did not make a decision on that, and typically when comments are entered into the record, they're read into the record. That was not read in that meeting, and I've been advised that we should only be accepting comments for the record for hearings.
Who, who advised?
I had conversation about this on another situation last year, and I was advised that it should be just for hearings. It's up to the trustees, but it's advised that it should just be for hearings.
I don't have a problem incorporating because it was specifically asked. I mean, if not, Mr. Pearl could have just stood up there at the podium and read the email. So I don't have, I don't have any concerns with just adding it. How Martha has added it.
Okay.
Because we do that with resolutions and motions. Sometimes we don't read them in their entirety. We say entered in the public record. So, I mean, I think, uh, the only other thing I do is add it is an addendum on the back of it, but it's, then it becomes difficult to track if that gets lost separated from the actual meeting minutes. So that's why I just cut and pasted it and incorporated it into the, the minutes. So that's an alternative for you guys if, you know, more conversation on that.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the September 20th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. You got a second?
Second.
Second, and by Asher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And Chief Grossimba will move right over to you.
Uh, I'd like to request approval to hire firefighter EMT Brandon Cerisi at a rate of 1435 per hour at the probationary period of one year, contingent on passing his physical and background checks.
So move.
Second.
Asher?
Yes.
Swatette?
Yes.
August? Yes.
Turn the background, someone take pictures?
Here, it gets sworn in.
You face the crowd this way?
Did you second that one?
I, Brandon Cerisi.
I, Brandon Cerisi.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
And faithfully discharge the duties of a volunteer fireman.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
For Hinkley Township in Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my service in the fire department.
During my service in the fire.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Brandon, you guys, you can go back to the station. The squad crew, the duty crew will, thank you, uh, meet you there to get some fitting for turn out here.
Uh, thank you.
Unless you're rapid.
That, that's fine. Yeah, I, that's fine. If you, you want to.
We have a guest. Yeah, we have Ron here.
Okay, never mind. Okay.
Um, do I adjust the attendance at this point?
No. It sure did. Someone else fired. Not showing our whole board.
Okay, um, we have a guest from Ra. Nicole?
Yes.
You can step right up for our virtual audience and, um, I just ask folks in the back, make sure that we kind of keep it quiet so everyone virtually can hear. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Appreciate it.
Could you state your name?
My name is Nicole Grambo. And I am the director of the rec softball program for the Recreation Association of Highland. And I am filling in as the director of fields and facilities. Uh, it's a vacant board position, so I've been filling in this past year. Earlier this month, I had submitted over some quotes and estimates to add field conditioner to the five fields here in Hinkley. Last year, the Recreation Association of Highland renovated all five of the fields. We, um, ended, ended up doing a grading project. And that grading project has greatly increased our ability to play, um, has increased the safety of the fields. But during that process, there was a soil analysis done, and we discovered that the silt content of the fields was pretty high. And we've really noticed that over the last couple of, see it while spring and fall season now, that after, um, a significant amount of rain, that the, the fields don't drain as well as we would hope that they would. So, um, the recommendation from the, the companies that we have been working with and that have done renovations would be to add field conditioner to the, to the fields. I was able to get quotes, uh, from a couple of companies to add field conditioner. Unfortunately, the low bid, uh, from DH Ball Services, the representative from that company called me, um, earlier this week and pulled his bid. He's no longer able to complete the project. We were hoping to get it done this fall, but during, with his timeline, he is not able to get that project done this fall. So, uh, we are realistically looking at, you know, if we, if we were to get it done, um, it would, we would have to go with the other bid, which was the higher bid. Uh, we would have to use that, or, uh, realistically looking at, uh, a spring or the break between spring and fall ball, or next fall, looking to add field conditioner. It's a pretty, it's a sizable project. Um, the overall cost of the project would be about $23,000. And the, and the impression that I've got previously is that the township would pay for materials possibly, and then Ra could absorb the cost of the labor. So what we had asked was to pay the, uh, the material cost, which was right around $15,000, um, from, um, DH Ball Services. But since that, um, since they have pulled their bid, the, the next bid was coming in at $23,000, eight, $23,804 for just the material cost. And then the labor cost is 27,775. Um, right now Ra can't afford to pay, uh, the labor costs. So we would be looking to, um, either ask the township to absorb all of the cost if we wanted to do it now, or we would, would be looking to do a significant amount of fundraising over the winter and the, the spring months to fund this. So I wanted to come today, even though our low bid has been, uh, pulled, I still wanted to come and open up the lines of communication to see what the, the township would, would be willing to do, if they would, if you would be able to, to contribute to the project, either, you know, now or at some point in the future. As I mentioned in the email that I sent, there's roughly over 700 kids within the Ra program. Um, we've, we've played over 600 games this, this year. So it's, it's a lot of kids. It's a, uh, we are a growing program. I, I can't, I'm a little bit scared to see what our numbers look like next year because we had so many teams this year that we had to get fields in Medina as well. We ended up taking, using three fields at Buckeye Woods Park in Medina outside of our district. So we're using, um, the field at Sharon Community Park, which the Sharon trustees are renovating. Um, so they have recently approved that project. It was a $14,000 project that they're, um, just for the one field that they're approving and that we're getting started on with Lewis, Lewis Landscaping. Um, we're also doing a small renovation project on, um, Sharon Elementary, the old Sharon Elementary, and there's a grass field there that we use. We also use Granger Park. There's a baseball field there. We use the two varsity fields when we can, when the varsity teams aren't using them. We use the five fields in Hinkley and then the two fields at Metro Parks and, and Hinkley as well. And then, um, like I said, the three fields in Buckeye Woods, which are outside of our district, and then we're also going to use Rising Valley next year too, just because of the growth of our program. So these five fields in Hinkley are a huge portion of, of, you know, a big part of our fields, and it's very instrumental to our, our program to have these fields healthy, for lack of a better term, and available to play. You know, with, with the rain and the, the weather, really anything that, since I've been working on fields, anything over an inch and a half of rain, um, we're looking at, uh, at least two or three days for the fields to dry out. Um, so that's canceling, you know, a significant amount of games and, um, really impacting a lot of, a lot of children. So just wanted to open up that line of communication, like I said, and, um, kind of get your feedback and, and see what, what, and if you would be willing to help out with that.
I just want to make sure that I have my numbers correct.
Yes.
I have $27,775 for just labor.
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't include materials.
Correct.
Materials and additional $23,000. You said 800 and?
Four.
Okay.
I think you would agree that's a big ask.
It is. It is a very big ask.
Way over what we budget annually, and, um, I spoke with Mike earlier this year, talking about setting up, you know, a, a plan, an implementation plan so that you're not rolling everything all into one, because there's only so much money each year. We spent a substantial amount of money this year already.
Mm-hmm.
So I would say that's something to take back to him. I, I think looking at fundraising and in what manner you can is a good idea. There has to be a buy-in from the folks who use it as well.
Mm-hmm.
To understand that. With that being said, if we were to contribute something now, we would have to adjust the 23 money that would be available.
Mm-hmm.
How, um, many days, I, if you, if you were able to get the funding for this, how many days then would it take to dry out for an inch and a half of rain? You said it's two to three right now?
Yeah, so, um, a comparable park that, um, that we could look at would be at the Bath Baseball, Bath Baseball Park, say that five times fast, that are, um, in Revere. So they have eight fields that their, um, that their park system supports, and they have a very similar, um, they have a very similar composition that we're looking to get, that we would like to get. And really, when they get a significant amount of rain, they're still able to play that day. So you can, it will stop raining and then 20, 30 minutes later, you're able to play. It's amazing the amount of water that those fields can take on and drain, and the kids are still able to, to play.
So I've talked to, um, some other people, um, just in the last year that have been asking, saying, you know, we need more money from the township to invest into Ra. And my question is, with the program growing as, as large as it is, you know, you said, I think, over 700 kids right now are going to be in the spring. Have you considered, I mean, it's pretty affordable, Ra. Have you considered increasing?
Yes.
The cost?
So we, we have been able to break down a, a price per player, so a break even price, and then, um, a, you know, if we wanted to make, make any amount of money per player. So we were able to break that down this year, and we are looking at an increase next year for spring costs. Um, and, and it's anywhere from $10 to $20 per kid, depending on the division. And, um, you know, as you, as you can imagine, the, the older kids, they're a little bit more pricey because they have more umpires, there's more, more to it. Um, but then, you know, the younger kids too, that, that we have, for ba, at, for baseball, for example, our rookies division, which is our six, seven, and eight-year-olds, we have nine teams. And they all play together. They don't play any outside communities, so they all play here. So we incur all of the costs. When we play, we are playing in other communities, we're able to split some of that cost because we have away games. So, um, so even though, you know, the older kids cost more, we have more younger kids in the program. So we are trying to increase the cost and do it in an incremental way so that, you know, the, the cost, we can try to raise more money and put more money into the, into the program. And we are planning on, you know, with the fields, I was, I've been doing probably way too much research about fields and conditioning and what needs to be done. And I've been speaking with the folks at the high school, and they said, well, you know, every three years, we have ag design systems come out and they laser grade our fields. And I'm just thinking, wow, every three years you have to do this. It's, you know, it's something that you continue, not that we want, I mean, the varsity fields are pretty high-end, but we don't need to have that. But, you know, it's just a, a rolling cost. It's something that we continually will have to, to put money into as a program. Um, so we're trying to build funds within the system so that we can continue to improve the fields and, and keep them.
Considering that when you're setting up your fee structure.
Yeah.
You know, I, I don't know what your situation is with Sharon or with Granger, but we have a contract in Hinkley, and I read through it, and number three says Ra will maintain the ball fields, grounds, and facilities. And we have gone, um, kind of above and beyond this contract this year and last, last year, in that we did provide dirt last year. I think for me, I would like to explore an option that's within the contract before we can make any type of decision, because we just don't have the funds to, to do something like this. And if we're going to move forward and allocate funds for the fields, which is kind of what we're talking about, um, I'd like to see a copy of your ledger, which is something that we annually can request with our contract.
Yeah.
And we signed this last year on September 7th, so I would like to see if we could get our hands on that for review before we contemplate any type of decision made.
I mean, we did a lot of Monique remind me, we, we did the lighting this year as well. That's.
Well, that was a grant.
Last year through a grant.
But it's still something.
No.
We had to do that.
We had to pay something this year because.
Oh, the repair or the bell, what, the bell is repaired.
We just spent significant money on a brand-new fence there. We've just done extra things this year that typically we would not have done.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in looking at what other communities do, and, you know, maybe it is something that we start looking at as, you know, allocating the funds for the fields and looking at it in a, in a different way. Um, just like, like I mentioned, Revere and Bath in particular, you know, their park system maintains those fields, like they, they do everything for those fields, even lining them.
Well, I think the differentiation is that that's just used by Bath, right? So in a Highland, our Highland District.
Right.
You've got fields in all three communities. And I, like I said, I don't know what, what you have with the other communities, but we have a contract. So that's a differentiation where Bath has funds allocated for their fields because their kiddos play on it. That's it.
Well, it's, it's Bath and Richfield.
Right.
So they bo, they both use that park. Um, the, the kids from the Revere system both use that park. So that would be the, the same with the, the Highland system here. It's, would be Hinkley, Granger, and Sharon.
Nicole, do you, um, do you happen to know the amounts the other townships have, um, uh, appropriated for Ra field maintenance this year?
Uh, so far this year, Sharon, um, they just appropriated, I would believe it was, uh, $14,744, if I remember correctly. Um, I'm not sure what Granger has done this year.
It allocates a lot to the soccer fields though, correct?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what's, what soccer does.
Were there any other, um, is that usually about the amount they have?
No, um, no, just the, the community, the Sharon Community Park, that is a significant renovation that they're allocating for this year. I'm not sure what their, their overall operations look like for maintaining the field there, but they do, do the, um.
And they, they do that all internally with, without Ra coming forward and asking for, okay.
And that's significant. $14,000 was just for the baseball field in Sharon, or was it also the soccer?
Just the baseball field.
In my conversations with the trustee in Sharon, they, Ra has been approaching them in public meetings. It's not been a, an agreement anywhere else.
Is that an annual thing or is that something this year that?
Just, just this year.
So what would they normally, do you have any?
I'm not sure what it is normally. But it might be something that, you know, you know, we start to look at, since we do have these facilities here, just looking at, looking at that contract, looking at allocations and seeing what that, what that looks like. Not with me, no.
Um, I will email it to you.
Great, thank you.
You guys have, um, you get, you indicated that you aren't unable, aren't able to, now that this other bid is, um, no longer valid, you're not able to pay the labor.
Correct.
Have you considered what fields, like an order of the fields, if they can all be done at one time, what would your order be?
My, the order of the fields will be, um, I would consider doing Coback One first. Um, that's the larger of the fields, and the, the older kids use that field. It gets beat up more. And then, um, then I would look at doing youth fields and then the following two Cobacks.
And Jack, would a, would a program like that fulfill your request to come up with a, a plan per se?
Well, that's, I, when we spoke, I asked you to prioritize what you wanted.
Because we do, we do appropriate an annual amount toward that, and the trustees are, are, are correct that the, the fence was replaced, but that was a long-term project. That's something that was saved up. We reduced our expenditures in the last two years because we knew that that was going to occur, and then it was significant, and then the soil this year. But throughout the, the con, contract, um, which is predates, goes back 25 years, probably the initial agreement, if not longer. The, the request has always been that the trustees usually appropriate about $15,000 a year toward the improvement of sites. And that they've always asked for, um, just a kind of a list and to prioritize. Now, Melissa's not incorrect in what that contract says, but in the past, these type of expenditures were considered capital improvements. Not, not so much maintenance, but capital improvements as the fence and the backstops and the in, install of Coback Three. Those were significant capital improvement sites because if Ra ceased to exist tomorrow, we would still have all those fields. So there's a little nomenclature there, but that's, but you guys are responsible for everything except the grass mowing.
Well, and the garbage, right?
Yeah, in the dumpster, in the porta pott. I mean, the one over at Coback.
So number one is, um, I have youth fields, so there's so many here in front of me, bear with me. Coback One, there's three, two. I'll get there.
And you do have the, you do have $15,000 still in the rec improvement line for 2022.
Is this a long-term?
Yes.
So once they put this on, the soil's going to be fine for?
I'm not sure how long I've been, I'm sorry, I've been gathering so much information about this, but I've, from what I've heard, you can add to the conditioner. Like that's, it's a, it's a big start, startup, for lack of a better term, but then you can add conditioner as you go on throughout the, the years. Um, so it is, is a fairly large upfront cost, but then if you need to add more, you can do that, and it's not going to be a huge, huge chunk of change like this.
Mike, do you have anything to offer?
I know I was on Cloverly Youth Baseball Board. Um, we did most ballpark maintenance, a lot of volunteer work, a lot of volunteer work, coaches getting out there before the games. Um, you know, my other head coach that I work with, he brought a skid steer out. We regraded all of our own fields. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into it. I know we had looked into conditioner. It just didn't seem like, for us, it didn't seem like a good long-term fix. Um, you know, we still have some areas where wet fields are a problem also. Um, good long-term is always crush brick. I know kids don't like to slide on it, but there are just a lot of different ways you can look at stuff. Um, but we did a lot of fundraisers at Cloverly Youth. So I think our last one last year, and I don't know the exact numbers, but it was, it was in between eight and 10 grand that we raised on a meat raffle, so. And we do a couple of other things like that, with the boys go out and sell stuff, and we actually split the money, I, I think they split the money between softball and baseball this year for the tickets, so. I would recommend looking at fundraisers. You know, that's, that's always a big help. Um, reach out to some local businesses, like that's what we did. Um, we got them to donate some prize stuff, so, and that's how we sold all of our fundraiser stuff. And then, like, our only expense generally was just our ticketing, like, we had to buy the tickets for the kids to sell, so. I mean, fundraiser, that's like, it's, that's my best opinion for, like, just raising money for volunteers, so, at least that's what we did, so. But other than that, I mean, like I said, conditioner, I don't know, it just, it seems like you're always going to have to come back to it. But like you say, you know, maybe once that base is in place, it might, it might be a better long-term effect. I, I don't know personally. I just know with us, a lot of volunteer time, we played on a lot of wet fields where actually, you know, say like my head coach, he'd be down there dragging it at his lunchtime. And then as soon as I get off of work, I'm down there top dressing it, just for the boys to play. It's, just takes a lot of effort on, uh, volunteers' time too.
And, you know, I feel like we, we do have a lot of coaches, you know, a lot of coaches within the program, and we're very lucky right now that we have two foremen, or four men and four women, um, that are using the Ventrac, which is a, you know, fairly sophisticated machine, and it's designed for baseball maintenance or field, field maintenance. And we have them do the dragging. We, we do have our coaches go out and rake and line the fields. Um, we're just not fortunate enough to have the volunteers that have the, the knowledge and the ability to do the grading like you have. You know, I, I've, and other boards that I've been on and, and other areas within the community, a, a lot of times you, you see, a lot of folks are willing to write a check, but not willing to, you know, donate their time as much. And I feel that's kind of the case where we are right now, is that we, you know, we do want to ask for, ask for funds and, and do fundraising and help, um, you know, like, like I said, help with that. Uh, but also looking for the, the help from the community as well.
Well, like I said, I'd be happy to look at, um, costs. I would like to see if we could get another.
Yeah, me too.
Because the one fell through, and then maybe work on some type of situation where we are prioritizing the fields, but I, like, would like to see the ledger do.
Mm-hmm. And I think that, um, and if we're looking now, I mean, I, I called eight different companies to ask to get quotes, and I had two, two get back to me, um, and actually come out. So I think if you're working in any type of industry, construction industry right now, it's kind of the nature of the beast, but, um, so I'd, I'd like to continue to work on this over the winter. And then if, and if we can gather those quotes and do something in 2023, either in the, the, um, the summer, in between spring and fall season or next fall, I think that's much more, it's much more feasible to do that. It's much more thoughtful to do it that way as well, um, that I feel like right now, if we were tried to get something in this fall, it would be way too rushed, so.
And I think, um, I, I, we're, we're a Ra family. We're, my son's big in Ra. Um, and I, I agree that I would like to see the township be able to help some, but not, like you said, we have five of the fields, but it is spread out across the, the three townships, so. Um, I am, I, I wouldn't say I'm selfish with my time, but I don't have a lot of spare time.
Right.
So I am someone that I'd just like to write a check.
Yeah, right.
So, you know, maybe, um, reaching out to the families and saying, this is the situation we're in, because obviously I know what's going on in the backend of the township, but as a Ra family, I wouldn't know how bad the fields are. So reaching out and seeing what you can raise that way, and maybe that's something that in three months, you can come back to the township and say, look, now we have this to do Mamjet. And maybe we can get, and maybe we can get two fields done, something like that. But I think, um, I give you a lot of credit for coming and, you know, coming to the meeting tonight and asking the boards for it. And I would just say maybe go the next step. And I would just say maybe go the next step and ask the raw families, because like you said, you've got 700 kids. That way it's, you know, maybe some people can only give $25 per kid, other people can say, write a check for $200. So you don't know until you ask.
Right.
The answer's always no until you ask.
Right.
That's what I would like to see. But thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Nicole, and I will email you the contract so you have a copy of it.
Thank you.
Okay. Chief Sutner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. First thing on the agenda is a motion to pay the 2021 dispatch invoice to Medina County in the total amount of $57,000 to be divided between the Police Department and Fire Department in the following amounts. Police Department, $34,200 and the Fire Department, $22,800.
That was 60/40?
60/40, yep.
So moved.
Second. Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Outstanding, thank you. Uh, next item up in your packets, there is a letter from the Metro Parks Police Chief Kelly Stillman thanking us for our assistance in a matter they had in the parks involving some folks with guns and. So for your information, um, this is like probably the third time in the last six weeks that we've received some acknowledgement from the parks of the work we do and they're helping them. To go along with that today, a couple of weeks ago, we had a head-on collision on 303 at Stony Hill. Um, the lady that was hit lives on Laurel Road and she stopped by today, dropped off some awesome donuts from Hillside Orchard by. But anyway, um, she just wanted to thank, there's still some over there, but they're going fast. She wanted to acknowledge Sergeant Singleton and Patrolman Asherle and the manner that they handled that crash. There were four or five cars involved, I believe. They, they're, just their entire professionalism, the manner of which they went about their business, remaining calm and just taking care of everybody, they, she was just amazed by that. Um, her husband is a commander at Cleveland PD, she's a prosecutor downtown. So it was just good to see a resident stop by and acknowledge that as well, so.
And not just at Christmas time.
Not just at Christmas time. So that, that's it for your, uh, your information is in your packets.
Thank you.
Was another officer recommended?
The, the two that are in your packet are Miracle and Ghetto. Oh yes, thank you. Um, I had, um, every year, the Safe Communities of Medina County puts on an award breakfast for the officers that go above and beyond in their traffic enforcement within the county. And Jessica, I put her in for an award because she had over 10 OVIs in a 12-month period. Now, you know, you're working night shift, you think, you know, that's a little less than one a month. But the officers from some of the municipalities that got awarded didn't have anywhere near what she had. So she, she's just a, she's doing a really good job for us, she's out there working hard. So yes, thank you for reminding me of that. So she was, uh, her efforts were acknowledged by the Safe Community folks, um, last month.
And now she has a partner in crime, she's not the only female officer.
Yeah, she's not, um.
I'm not lonely in the locker room anymore.
No. And the next item up is requesting trustee approval to replace our current phone recording system in the department through Interaction Insight Corporation, their formerly Stephen Campbell and Associates, who is our current vendor, um, at a total cost of $16,819. This upgrade will have a serviceable lifetime of approximately 10 years. I would like to, to fund this through the remaining approximately $20,000 we have from an anonymous donation to the department several months ago.
I, you know, I was thinking about this just for the public's understanding, we received $50,000 donation and initially it was for the purposes of renovating the police department, um, building. That was something that we talked about last year, we found out that it was far exceeded the budget that we had implemented and so we tabled it. I did reach out to the donor back in February to see if he was comfortable with the flooring being done in, in the garage. Have we had any conversation with him about this specific?
I have not, um, and the reason I asked for it out of that fund was because it is a long-term, you know, project for the department. And I felt it was, you know, given the fact that we're not renovating the department at this point, that it would be an appropriate expenditure from that account. Now, we certainly can reach out to him.
You don't, I mean, you have the money in your equipment line without that.
Then we can leave.
I, I keep separate accounting on the balance of that donation. But if you would prefer not to utilize, it's all in the same pot.
I just think that when we had conversation last year, Chief, you had said that you wanted to look at fob systems on all the doors and things like that. And I would rather see that monies go towards new carpeting or some of the other things that we talked about, that's just my.
I, and I agree with you.
Based on his donation.
Martha says we've got the funding elsewhere to do it, then by all means, I agree.
So just, just disregard.
Disregard the.
Balance of the donation and just, um, your equipment. Your appropriated equipment line. So moved.
Second it is amended.
Asherle?
Yes.
Uh, Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item, we'll go back to, uh, our new female officer. We need to get her a locker for the ladies locker room. In your packet, there's two quotes. Originally, when we contacted Salisbury Industries, um, we had gotten a quote from them to not only re-add the locker in the ladies locker room, but given that we resurfaced the floor out in the Sallyport, was to purchase new lockers out there for the officers to put their, their weapons in as they move from vehicle to vehicle and their equipment. That price quoted came, came in at a little over 34,000, I'm sorry, 3,400. I decided to just get a quote for replacing or adding the locker for Shelby. That quote came in at, excuse me.
$2,468.
No, hers, hers alone was, was less than that. I want to say it was around 1,300.
Is that this one?
Is that the $1,088.86?
Yes, that's it, but there was, um, well, maybe, that, that's it, it's the 1,088, I apologize.
Okay.
Since, since that quote, Salisbury came back to us with a better quote for what we originally asked for, which is the lockers to, the new lockers to put out in the Sallyport. And the locker for Shelby, they discount, that amount came in at $3,085. They discounted it 617 and they removed shipping. So what was a little over 3,400 is now $2,468. So.
Why does it say 925 on here? So what are you asking for?
925 is for the locker for Jessica.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for is to add the lockers for the Sallyport now.
Then there's two, right up there.
Correct, 1750, the, the key, the key system for the locks, which match our lockers throughout the building. So that price came in at 2,468.
Okay.
Through Salisbury Industries.
And that includes the shipping?
That includes the shipping.
So your motion is for beyond the ladies' room locker?
Correct, so I'm, I'm asking for a motion to purchase Sallyport lockers, a new locker for the ladies locker room through Salisbury Industries at a total cost of $2,468.
So moved.
Second. Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
I apologize for the confusion.
That's not, that's okay.
Well, that came in after I'd already sent you. And I did not want to send Suzanne into a, a tizzy today on her birthday.
No, I just saw the other quote, that's what I was trying to.
And then the last item I have, I have discussed individually with each of you, is the benefit package I would like to propose to our next hire. I just need the consensus from the three of you that that needs your acceptance to move forward.
Chief, have we met the contractual obligation of posting the vacancy for this position?
We don't have a contractual obligation for that. It's a patrolman slot.
This is a patrolman slot?
Mm-hmm. Bruce is retiring.
He's a sergeant.
Right, we're going to replace him with a patrolman and at some point after the first of the year, I will come back to the board for the appropriations to have a written test for sergeant's position as well as an assessment center.
So after Bruce retires, we're going to go to, um, two sergeants?
We'll go to two sergeants and I intend to make one of the patrolmen an acting OIC to cover that platoon.
And what is his date for retirement?
Uh, December 8th is his last day.
Not that he's counting.
So.
Uh, he reminds me every time I see him how many days he has left.
His birthday today too.
It is.
So would this, um, put you up and running, everybody would be trained and out of FTO by the time Bruce?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
We will still have, um, Shelby will be in FTO through the end of the year.
Okay.
As we go into next year, she will then enter the evaluation phase with Sergeant Singleton. And the new officer, if everything goes, you know, smoothly, will probably be about 30 days behind her.
Okay. So close.
Close, yes.
Okay.
Well, based on what you emailed over to us, sounds like a great candidate.
He's a good young man.
I have no objections. I have none either.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that and that's all I've got.
Anybody else have anything for Chief?
Chief, did you get fuel today?
Did not get fuel today. Um, I might stop on the way home, so I only have a quarter of a tank. But I can probably wait till tomorrow, so is it finished?
That's why I was asking you.
No, I have not.
This is a negative, I see a negative.
There's a shaking, I know.
I'll probably do it tomorrow because I have to go get the lock, key to the lock and all that, so I'll probably wait till tomorrow.
Use your credit card for gas if you need to get gas.
Oh, no worries.
Does anyone from the audience have anything for Police Chief Sutner? You're free to go, thank you for being here.
And I apologize for the confusion on the locker.
Thank you for staying and listening to all of the information about our youth fields.
Yeah, I can, you know, the kids need good places to play ball, but I understand the financial aspect too. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Have a great evening.
Chief Rosenbaum.
Thank you. Uh, request appropriations for $2,086.50 for six firefighter helmets and six of the leather shields from Fire Safety Services. One thousandths of it will be supplied through the OTARMAC grant, with the remaining $1,086.50 supplied out of the Hinckley Fire Department, uh, fire fund.
Thomas, have you applied recently granted?
I will get it sent in, I thought you, we had, the way you said, I thought we had it already.
No, I.
Okay, I'm going to misunderstand, okay, okay, then I'm going to hold off till I get that s- I'm going to hold off then until I get that in. I misunderstood how you.
You can do this.
Okay.
You just had to determine what it was.
Okay, okay, I misunderstood that when you.
So, yeah.
You want me to just apply it and then we can do it another time?
Just buy it.
Okay.
And that you will apply for reimbursement through the OTARMAC grant.
Okay.
So if we could just amend it to, to say that.
Okay.
That's all.
So moved.
That's amended.
Thank you. Sorry about that, Martha.
That's all right, I looked at it and I'm like. Okay, so, let's see. Asherle, Augustine?
Yeah.
I think we both kind of moved it and Jack seconded, so pick your poison on that one and then, I don't care. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to make it easier here.
Thank you.
Okay.
Request appropriations for $315, uh, for turnout gear boots for firefighter, paramedic Jacob Bartonelli through Fire Safety Services.
So moved.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Request approval, move firefighter, paramedic Jared Bonnet from EMT paid from 1576 to, uh, an hour to paramedic pay at $18 an hour effective 8, September 18th. He passes paramedic, is now functioning as a paramedic.
Congratulations.
Yep, very happy.
Great. So moved.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Request approval for Kimberly Gerbasi for three-month paternity leave effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Congratulations.
I guess, we can't say no to that.
Yeah. Request approval for three-month leave, uh, absence for Daisy Stiglmeyer effective immediately. She, um, said she'll probably be back before her three months, but she's working full-time in Ridgefield, so she's just trying to get her feet under herself there.
She's been there.
Yeah.
Six months?
With, over there.
Ridgefield?
Part-time, yeah, but moved just as her first full-time job, so she's still doing her 40-hour weeks there now.
Good for her, she was excited about that.
Yes, she was.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Request approval, hire Lydia Walkna as an independent contractor as needed for a fire educator at a rate of 1825 per hour, not to exceed 15 hours per month.
Retirement, huh?
Yeah, right, exactly, right.
Who's done the training board?
She, she did it up until she retired.
Nobody's filling that.
No, I have nobody.
Well, it's an interesting time with the school.
Yeah, that's, yep.
People back in.
Someone seconded?
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swedek? Augustine?
Yes, welcome back, Lydia.
Um, two things not on there. Thank you everybody publicly that came to the Dutch Truck Event. It was, uh, I know the weather was, uh, always impending for the day, but it held off to the last five minutes, it started raining. We estimated around 400 to 500 maybe, which was still a lot better turnout than we were expecting because of the potential rain. It was a nice day. Uh, the other item is, I'm not ready to rescind the motion, but, uh, I'm waiting for confirmation, but the brakes on the engine, uh, will be covered all by warranty. They found a defect in the air chamber and they were saying that contributed to the brake wear on it. Uh, I'm waiting for the, the 100% that the bill's been paid before I say anything, but that's what I've been told by the warranty department at HME.
That's great. I'm waiting for that.
Good job.
Yeah.
Still a way in the big hill.
Yeah, yes, yes, we are. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience have anything for Fire Chief Rosenbaum? You're free to go, sir.
Thank you guys very much, have a good night.
You too. Mr. Bahari, you are up.
Uh, one of the things I have tonight, um, talking with Angie, she wants to try to get the bids out a little bit earlier this year. So there's going to be, she wants them by October 14th. So the one thing I do have for tonight is the Rover proposal work for 2023 and next year. Um, I sent you all out an email, did you guys all get that and kind of get a chance to look over kind of what we're proposing for construction for next year?
Yes, it's a great list.
Um, for everybody, what we're looking at doing is, uh, one of the things we'd like to do is continue on Valley Brook, um, pretty much where we left off. I would like to also put, and the completion of Valley Brook is that second phase is the alternate to see what we can get for pricing. Obviously, Mattingly Road, uh, we pushed that off to try to get some work done. Uh, we're going to be working on that through the winter for our trees, so we want to get that on the list next year and that's going to be, uh, base repairs with a chip seal coat. Another road we're looking at is Boston Road, the section by the golf course. Once, if you guys decide to put this out, I want to get ahold of, uh, Royal Tendancy, kind of where they're at with that. That road's, it's getting a little rough, it, it needs some attention, so.
Adding.
But that one will also be, um, base repairs and chip seal top coat also. And then the last road on the list would be the middle section of Bellis, which would finish out all of Bellis for another two-inch milling fill, um, with a hot mix overlay.
I think Boston has actually brought you heights. I think Boston is actually Broadview Heights.
The.
That part is North Royal.
By Valley or Golf Course.
Okay.
Yeah, the golf course.
Gotcha. I was thinking of the other side.
Yeah.
Would we fix that? They don't?
Hopefully.
I just forget about it.
Catch a little air.
No, you don't get air. You get scraped across the bottom of your car.
Oh, I guess I go a lot faster.
I like the list. I think it's good.
It's a great list. And I like breaking up Valley Brook again and seeing what they are separately.
Mike, how long will we get out of that with Bellis Road with um with redoing um the two inches and everything that you've done? Like on the other two parts, how long is it supposed to last?
That's that's all uh opinion, I guess. Um, you treat it like concrete, you know? If we crack seal, you should get a really good longevity out of it.
Thirty years. Not 30 years.
No, but you'll get 10 plus of it.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
And generally, you know, for the longevity of like chip seal, you know, you're probably going to go and put two, three coats on it. By the time the hot mix is going to be ready to be replaced. And then by that time, you're milling that out again anyway. Um, the last few bids, I know the last one I saw when they bid out for Stony Hill, you know, it was like to do the mill and then against the chip seal compared to a hot mix, it wasn't a very big difference. Once you put that mill in, it was, I, and I don't know the exact numbers. Do you know what that difference was, Martha? Eight to 10,000?
Yeah.
It wasn't.
It was minimal, yeah.
So.
And you guys are going to be looking at a lot more mill and fill in the future.
A lot of our red, yeah, are getting that.
They all need, they're getting too hard.
But like Bellis being the main, um, like we said, you know, one of the programs we want to stick with any of our 45 on our roads, we'd like to put it into a hot mix. Um, anything high traffic is what, you know, hot mix should be, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Fantastic. So you're going to send it over to the county?
Yeah.
Be in touch with us.
Yeah. I have one thing not on the list tonight. Um, it's going to be the Lewis and Landbell came back a little bit more money than what it was. So um, it's a motion to approve the additional amount to Lewis and Lane Professionals for engineering services for Bethany Wayne in the amount of $494.50.
So moved.
Second. Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Once I get the signed agreement back from Trimore, that'll get over to Rector to finalize. And that way hopefully we can just start dating, get that project moving. Um, Valley Brook, they should be paving Thursday, so.
And our hope is to jump from one to the other.
We're hoping as long as we can get all the paperwork covered, so. They're going to pave the main trunk line Thursday and then come back and hand pour radiuses. So that's what I know. They put out uh information to the residents that Thursday at seven o'clock. It's going to be all the way to next Friday. They'll have to stay off of it for the cure time, so.
Very good. Um, before you leave, I wanted to have a quick conversation about that cemetery wall at Maple Hill. I talked to Mike and I gave you the estimates again. I maybe haven't given you your package yet. Um, this is something we talked about at the last meeting, trustee Asherle. There's the packet. Um, it's $2,370 and Mike has said that him and his guys might be able to just um power wash and seal that wall. I know we were worried about weathering and he's pretty confident that it will still weather even though it's sealed. We spent over $40,000 on the wall and I think it would be a good idea to seal it based on the recommendation from the gentleman that installed it.
You can take care of it?
Yeah, we can do it. It just, it just takes time. It's not a hard, hard project.
Okay, I'm okay with that then.
You okay with that, trustee Asherle?
I still don't want to seal it. Let's see whether.
It'll, it will still weather, yeah. Are you sure?
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate it. So we'll tuck that, pass it away.
Well, you still, Mike, are you gonna have a materials cost on that? I mean, how much your sealer?
It's not going to be very much at all. I'd have to see what the coverage is for the sealers, though.
Yeah, we can talk about that once we do some investigation into it.
I was gonna say it's not much like even when we're, like when we're resealing, like we pour concrete pads, it's a little bit of sealer goes along, Mike. So it'd be very minimal.
So it'd be a recurring expense because we're already buying a sealant.
Yeah.
Well, now it's not, it's.
If it's from the cemetery line, it's different.
No, it's, it, it'll go under BC if it's small enough.
Okay.
Yeah, operating supplies.
Very good. Does anybody else have anything for Mr. Bahari?
What's the Great Lakes, sir?
It's only lifted up there yesterday.
They were supposed to be finished this weekend, weren't they?
Supposed to be finishing yesterday.
Were they not here today?
Nope. Not that I know of. I don't know. We were out and about, so at the end of the day, they weren't up. So he's gonna, I'll call him first thing in the morning.
Yeah, I will, too.
Yeah.
Thank you for going with me today on our little expedition. I will talk about it a little bit later. I don't want to hold you up. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Bahari? Anyone from the audience have anything for service superintendent Bahari? You're free to go, sir. Thank you for being here. I know it's a long day. Um, really quick, I just wanted to mention on zoning front that um Mike and Ken in the service department, as well as Tom Zee and I walked the annual uh Western Reserve Conservancy properties in Hinckley, which was is River Woods and the newly acquired land from Mr. Gibson. Um, just a beautiful morning. I um really enjoyed it. We're very, very blessed to have these properties. They certainly enhance the character of our town. And I want to send those special thanks out to Mark Pervish because he still handles the um care and maintenance of River Woods for us um as a, on a volunteer basis. So just wanted to acknowledge his service to Hinckley Township. Um, and that's it for zoning. Trustee Asherle?
Um, so I said I had nothing, but I lied. Um, so in speaking to Lynn and Suzanne, there is um another plugin that they would like us to purchase for the website. Um, so as they update it, right now Suzanne has taken screenshots of everything so that she sees what it looked like to kind of track the changes to it. There is a plugin that they can purchase that allows you to track what changes were made and who made them. So they would like to do, it's a two week free trial with it to see if it's worth it for them. But we thought that if they do like it, like they think they're going to just make a motion for it. So after the two week trial, we can just continue with it. So that would be a motion um to pay WordPress website at an annual cost of $149.
$144, isn't it? You have the email there?
Um, the business version is $149 per year.
Is that what it, okay.
That is from today, October 4th, Lynn.
Oh, okay. I was looking at the other one then.
Yes.
So it's $149.
$149 per year and it is renewable yearly. It will automatically track and email the admin any changes to the website.
So it's like anything that's posted, anything they're talking about?
Yeah, anybody who's making any changes to it.
Second.
Asherle?
Yes.
Swadek?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes. And then we have to rescind the motion um that I made a couple of weeks ago with the um the payment to the post office for the Kimball letter. The post office lost our check.
Oh.
So Martha.
It's in the mail.
So Martha voided that check. Um, in the interest of getting that mailer out, which went out today, Angel Printing covered the cost of it. They wrote a check to the post office. So Martha wrote a check um to Angel Printing. So I just think, do I need to rescind that?
I thought you were done doing that.
Yeah, just explain. It wasn't our post office. It was at Angel Printing and they gave it to the post office in Cleveland and then nobody could find it. Hand me that stack of bills. I'm going to get the new, the new cost because it was different. So why don't you guys rescind that initial motion? Actually, my payment register.
You have to have.
You don't need the amount.
Rescind my motion to pay the post office for the annual Kimball letter?
Yeah, just, just rescind that motion.
Second advice, Swadek. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then a motion to reimburse Angel Printing $1,010.38 for the mailing.
Reimburse, how are you?
No, Angel, I didn't have to pay it this time.
Okay. Yeah, rescind please. That's what I thought.
No, no.
Martha whips out her checkbook.
And then just strictly as an FYI, I did speak to Bethany Dentler last week. Um, just let her know uh the agreement that the board came to with the um CRA zone at 130th and 303. Um, she said she was going to communicate that back to Drug Mart to see if they wanted to proceed with that. And I have not heard that from her, but they are now on the same page that we are all on. And um that is the 50% tax abatement for 15 years.
Very good. Thank you.
That is it.
Thank you very much. Trustee Swadek? Can we just check off fuel?
Yes.
Check off rod?
Well, I'm, I'm journalizing all this. So when the editors say, why didn't you have your full fuel system installed? You don't want to approve the policy yet.
Not without the system in place.
Okay, because they, they will, all they want to see is a policy. So they're going to just, you know, if it's not done by the end of the year, I will get dinged for it on the audit next year. I don't, I don't care.
Ending the system install?
Well, you're getting this is, I don't really care.
The policy, right?
You know what?
It's not.
Yeah, right. It's just for internal use. It's not for Great Lakes.
They should pay more attention going after the people that are stealing money than people who don't approve policies.
In case.
Let's.
In case we end up with a different company, I'm gonna hold on then.
Okay.
Uh, the only other thing I have was that uh I met with Mr. Gibson and we went out to Becker's Sign and sat down with him and he uh, he gave me information and we had selected a style of sign that he would like to see there. And uh, we worked the text and uh, Mr. Becker has all that and he's going to prepare a new quote out of them for that.
Very good.
But I have not received that yet.
Thank you for doing that. I did talk to a preferred vendor like we had talked about on the phone. Um, and they just sent over some renderings today. So I just wanted to give them to you and see if that provided any interest to the trustees or Mr. Gibson. Certainly we can pursue quotes on those if, if anyone um says that, you know, the style maybe stands out and is more to his liking or not. So you have those renderings.
What are these made of?
You know, they're all different. I think um this is the company that did the River Woods sign for us and then did the administration of police sign for me back in 2017. Um, so they're, they're all different composites. I think they're just looking for an idea of what we would like to see before we go into the materials. So. I just gave it to you with the um C and M quote or the ceiling of the wall, the Maple Hill wall.
Got it.
Got it? So it's just food for thought. Um, anything else, trustee Swadek?
Nope.
All right. My Mr. Gibson on my list, too, so we will check that off. Um, there is an informational meeting with the Cleveland Met Park Parks, Medina County Parks here at Town Hall on October 19th. I've been talking about this for two months. I'm very excited. It's at 6:30 PM. It will be virtual option as well. And they intend to discuss their individual um requirements for donation of land. So if you are able to, we would love to have you. It's just an informational meeting, so there will be no meeting minutes. Um, but like I said, they also have a virtual option. Um, community trick or treat is scheduled for Saturday, October 22nd in Town Center at 4:00 PM. So if anybody wants to join us, this is a good spot for us um all to congregate. It's been happening for about eight or nine years now. And it certainly is helpful for those kiddos that live in, um, don't, don't live in developments and don't have a formalized trick or treat. So hope you can join us for that. Um, I had two more things that are not on my list. Uh, Jack or Jackson approached me after the BZA meeting last week. I think it was a BZA meeting. And he had requested more hours to work within the office setting here. He said he's done with school at like 2:30 on Monday and our office is open to six. So he's wondering if he could work in some capacity here at Town Hall from three to six. I had a conversation with Suzanne and Lynn and I said, maybe he could upload the videos onto YouTube or help us with something like that. And um Lynn has been doing just a fantastic job of doing that and learning it. So they didn't feel that there was any need for him to come into the Town Hall, but I wanted to have discussion with you guys about it. See what your thoughts were. Um, or just think about it.
Yeah, I mean, right off the top of my head, I would think, um, you know, it's great that he wants more hours. I can, I mean, it's not as easy just because of his school schedule um to split the proctoring of the meetings. But, and I, I love that he's so proactive with it, but I would not want to be creating work just for him to be up here more. So I mean, I guess that would be something, conversation with Martha, with Suzanne, um Lynn. See what, if anything, because you know, we're trying to streamline now even Lynn's role so that um she, it's, it's the wisest use of her time. While she's here, so I would say I love it. I love how proactive he is with that, but um.
I don't think we could just create a position because somebody wants to work.
Right.
It was fantastic that he approached me, though. I give him a lot of credit for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I will let him know or you can let him know since he's been working primarily with you, however you want to handle that. Um, but in that conversation that we were having, um Suzanne and Lynn and I, we started talking about all that Lynn's doing now outside of her current job description, specifically with the website, all that she's learned, um, the hours that she's putting in. We have saved tremendous amount of money with her work here where we would have had that three pages, for instance, of edits cost $3,000 with proximity. It's, she's really not getting paid a whole lot of money. So I was wondering if you'd be willing to give her a dollar raise for the rest of this year. And she's working outside the scope of what she was hired to do.
Um, Suzanne had approached me about that um last week also, and I told her, um, I told Suzanne, since Suzanne is, you know, um, the supervisor of Lynn, I told Suzanne, when she's ready to have that conversation, I would be ready to meet with Suzanne and have that conversation and then meet with Martha and see um how the budget allows for that. And then to bring it up to the board, I, I would love to just give everybody raises all the time, you know? I think that Lynn is doing a fantastic job. She is doing more than um maybe what that previous role had had. And I think that's also because we have the website update. And she did express that that was kind of right up her alley. She wanted to work on that a lot. So I'm not, um, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just not ready to make a decision on it right now.
Okay. That's fair. We can table it. Jack, agree with that?
I agree.
Okay. Just wanted to broach the topic because I think she's just gone above and beyond, just done a fantastic job. Um, that is all I have. Martha?
Let me finish right.
Do you want me to read a resolution for you?
There's a couple. Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, make a motion to adopt resolution 10042201.
Mm hmm.
Approving the following inter fund transfers, $10,000 from 1,0760730000 improvement of sites to 1,110360000 contracted services. Should I keep going?
You may need a second.
Second. Second advice, Swadek?
So while we're on the topic of general fund monies, this, this is necessary to pay the um proximity bill. And we had to move money from uh improvement of sites, one of the lines. We have four improvement of sites lines, uh, actually, no, yeah, uh, three or four. Um, one is a general improvement of sites. This is for recreation. Um, then there's a subcategory improvement of sites under that same fund line.
Then there's a subcategory, improvement of sites under that same fund line, just with a one at the end of the zero grouping, and that's for cemeteries, and then there's another one, 02, for recreation. So the $7,000 is for proximity, but we're also going to need additional monies in contracted services for future bills for different things in the office. So I do need to probably have a conversation regarding hours, wages, appropriations of salaries and a lot of different things, because there's a lot of things now that weren't in play when we set our budget for the beginning of the year. You know, I, again, I think it's great that Jackson wants to work, but we, we don't have the money. I mean, we're, we're drawing from general fund for every administrative and zoning wage absent Tom Wilson and Tom Zablottini. So that's, that's why it's necessary to, to move this out of somewhere else that also has a need. Asher?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Okay, now do O2, please.
Motion to adopt resolution 100422-02 as follows, resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, in accordance with the provisions of law, has previously adopted a tax budget for the next seceding fiscal year commencing January 1st, 2023, and whereas the Budget Commission of Medina County, Ohio, has certified its action thereon to this board together with an estimate by the county auditor of the rate of each tax necessary to be levied by this board, and what part thereof is without, and what part within the ten mil limitation, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Hinkley Township, Medina County, Ohio, that the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission in its certification be and the same are hereby accepted, and be it further resolved that there be and is hereby levied on the tax duplicate of said township, the rate of each tax necessary to be levied within and without the ten mil limitation, and be it further resolved that the fiscal officer of this board be and is hereby directed to certify a copy of this resolution to the county auditor of said county.
Second. Asher?
Yes.
Swedick?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
And the fund status is currently $7,95,466.96, of which $1,072,375.24 is in pooled investments, and $6,23,091.72 is in primary checking.
Thank you. Anything else, Martha?
No, just confirming, you all received your copies of the 2023 estimated budget numbers.
Yes.
They really don't mean too much, because they don't account for the actual carryovers, but they'll get us started in Jan, first week of January.
Very good.
Doesn't mean anything till it comes from Martha. Yeah, well, I don't mean it doesn't mean anything, but was it fuzzy math? Is it still called fuzzy math?
Kind of looks fuzzy.
I'm dating myself, fuzzy math.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills in an amount of $235,243.17.
Second.
Second advice, Asher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we will open it up to public comment.
Richard coming in?
We just ask that you come up to the podium so the virtual audience can hear.
Richard Pearl King Road. I know the website's under construction, but there seems to be some information there that is incorrect. If you click on the zoning button, it indicates there's a public hearing on Monday, and that two text amendments will be heard. One is the Town Center area from B1 to B3, and the other one is the area at Hinkley Hills and Bellis Road from.
There is a hearing on Monday, the tenth.
There is a hearing. But I believe that second one, that second text amendment is not going to be heard.
I have not seen what you're speaking of, but I will definitely look at it tonight and make sure, and we have been doing a lot here internally with the website, Lynn's been working diligently to update it, I think a couple things were lost and then found, and so we will do our best to make.
Well, the planning commission didn't act on that one.
Correct.
So I don't know how that could be at the hearing.
It's just, it's a text amendment and then the one map amendment.
Right. But that's not what's on the website.
Right.
So you're misleading people.
Well, I think we're in a situation where we don't have the funds to pay proximity to update it, and we're trying our best to do it.
Okay.
But I.
But you could add something, you should be able to add something.
To my attention, because I will.
Because it involves a lot of people around those six properties that may attend that meeting, and then find out that it's not being heard, and when it is heard, perhaps the next month, they may not have, they may not attend that meeting.
Legal notices go out to all adjacent properties for that, that reason. But I appreciate you bringing it to my attention, I will have Lynn look at it tomorrow. Anyone else?
My name's, hi, my name's James Justice, I'm with at 4404 Kingsbury Road, Medina, owner of Architectural Justice. I just went to the school, the auction, looking at the property there, and I know you wouldn't be able to approve anything, but you know, we're outgrowing our place in Medina, and look at that as a possibility, and I know it's zoned R1. It would be a design center, coffee shop, cooking school, not cooking school, but cooking classes, just an in general design center, also some artisan shops, and just wanted to know if, just to get the feel of it, if that would even be a possibility for that property.
It's a very good question. Right now, it's, it's R1, which would not, I don't think, allow all of the uses that you're, you're suggesting, so you'd have to come in for an amendment, a map amendment, and I can't speak to what the board would do with that amendment until it's filed and before us with a public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, so no feeling on.
Have you talked to the zoning inspector?
Yeah, yeah, I did. He felt pretty good about it, so.
So he could guide you on, on the number of steps?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, if there's nothing further, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at 7:49 P.M.
Second.
Second advice, Asher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.